I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for what has been a very productive and positive school year for our students and staff. Our students, teachers, administrators, and staff have performed in an incredible way in the last few weeks as they have continued teaching and learning under very challenging conditions. We pray that you will keep all of us safe during the next few weeks and months to come and give us guidance in making decisions which are in the best interests of our students and our community. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. England, would you lead us in a flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchay.
Mrs. Acevedo.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
I mean, Mr. England.
Here.
Ms. Daisart.
Here.
Mr. Long and Mr. Smith are not with us. Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Just want to welcome everyone back. It's so great to be here tonight. And on behalf of the entire board, we'd like to congratulate all the graduates, the preschool, the kindergarten, the fifth graders, and of course, our seniors, the class of 2020. Congratulations to them. And a special thanks, as Ms. Votchay said in her prayer, to all our faculty, staff members, and administrators who have absolutely gone beyond the call to make learning continue throughout this whole pandemic and also just gone beyond the call for all of our students to bring some normalcy into their lives. So we thank faculty, staff, and administration very much for all the extra work they've gone through. And to our students also, you know, everybody has been in a learning curve. And so thanks to the students and the parents out there who have learned Zoom and all the other technological advances that we've had to overcome. So thank you very much. Okay. First item on the agenda is a public hearing on the 2020-2021 general fund and special revenue funds budget. Good evening, Mr. Fernandez. Does anyone have a motion or anyone have any discussion on the -- well, actually, it's a public hearing, but we don't have anyone to speak.
Anyone to speak?
Anyone? No one came, Ms. Dennisac, right, to sign up to speak? Thank you.
Just to close.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fernandez?
If someone's to speak, we just have to close.
Second.
That you closed what? Okay. There's a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Mr. Warner, to close the public hearing. And Ms. Votchay, no one has called on this issue either, correct?
No.
Besides, no one showing up tonight?
No.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of the motion on the floor? It's to close the public hearing. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. The public hearing on the 2020 general fund and special revenue budget is now closed. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the following minutes. The minutes of the regular monthly meeting of January 28, 2020, as published on March 13, 2020.
So move.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. And just for the public's benefit and anyone watching, we can't -- because we've had to add additional mics and space ourselves out, we're going to have to vote verbally tonight. Okay? All righty. Next item is the minutes of the regular monthly meeting of February 18, 2020, as published on April 3, 2020. Motion by Ms. Acevedo. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the minutes of the special meeting of March 17, 2020, as published on April 3, 2020.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Campbell. Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is a motion to approve the guide to student conduct for the 2020-21 school year. Ms. Votchay.
Okay. Normally, in the spring, there's a committee that convenes to take a look at any potential changes for the following year in the guide to student conduct. There were no suggestions coming in from the school or the community to make any changes for this year. So we're recommending that we keep the guide to student conduct without any changes and move that into the 2020-21 school year.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. England. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? There being none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. No one opposed? No. Okay. Next item is a motion to approve the Head Start COLA and Quality Improvement and COVID-19 Supplement. Ms. Votchay.
Okay. Earlier on this spring, we approved -- or this board approved our Head Start renewal application for next school year. We also have received an additional appropriation to add to the original Head Start allocation. One is the COLA, which is the Cost of Living Adjustment, and the Quality Improvement Fund. We usually get that every year. That amounts, as you can see from the backup documentation, to an additional $72,509. And as we do each year, we put that toward the salary and benefits of the differential because the program does not cover the full cost of all the salaries and benefits of the personnel working in our Head Start program. In fact, we pay our preschool teachers on the same salary schedule as we pay our K-12 teachers. And in most operations in Head Start, they're paid well below that. So we try to keep our teachers on the same salary schedule. We make up locally any differential which exists. So with these funds, when they come down, we're allowed to apply them against that differential. So the first part is the $72,509 that we are going to submit for the differential and the existing salary and benefits. The third part is there's a special appropriation nationwide for Head Start funding because of the COVID-19 situation. Our share of that, if you saw from the backup documentation, is $32,480. And that goes to any expenses related to conditions which might result as -- or might be the result of this pandemic. And what we're doing with a lot of the funding that's coming down is because of the school closure that we just experienced, and we're uncertain of what the potential school closures may or may not be in the coming years. One of the major efforts in the funding that will be coming down from many -- from other sources, even for our K-12, is to make sure that we have one-to-one devices, technological devices for each student and connectivity for each student. So we are proposing to spend that $32,480 toward the pre-K Chromebooks, but which are the touchpad type, that the younger students actually use. So that if we have another potential closure, then from the four-year-olds, they will be taking those home, just as we have plans for K-12 to be able to do that through other funding sources. So those are the three supplements, the Cost of Living Adjustment and Quality Improvement Funds and the COVID-19 Supplement, the first two going toward the differential in salary and benefits, and the COVID going toward the touchpad Chromebooks.
So do we need two separate motions?
No, we can do it all.
We can do it together. Okay. Is there a motion on the floor this time?
I'll make a motion that we send the recommendation to the full board. This is a full board.
Why you got that thick old folder sent home?
That we -- a motion to approve the Head Start COLA and Quality Improvement Supplement slash COVID-19 application.
Okay. There's a motion.
Say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Warner. There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion or questions on this item? Okay. There being none, please cast your votes. Well, I'm sorry. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next item, personnel changes for May 2020. And the list is quite lengthy.
The list is very lengthy. We had mailed on to you last week preliminary lists as a result of the -- of Transfer Day and internal transfers within the school system. On May 16, we held a virtual job fair with all the prospective applicants for next school year. And what you see highlighted in yellow are the changes within the system and the hires from outside as a result of the May 16 job fair. We're really, really pleased. We had a lot of good people to apply for these positions, and we're getting close, really, to filling all of our positions for the upcoming school year. So that's the initial part of this. You're also going to see in the personnel changes, on the very last page, under administrative appointments, we did advertise for both the principal and the assistant principal of Raleigh Alternative School. And we're happy, you know, to announce at this time that Joe Sipolone will be named principal of Raleigh Alternative School. Joe has been with us for about nine years. He was a teacher at Raleigh Alternative School for several years. He also was the administrator in charge of our summer school program at the middle school level for several years. So he's run that operation. And currently, he is at the central office, the middle school coordinator for English Language Arts and Social Studies. So he has a very rich background in curriculum and coaching and assisting teachers. So I think he's going to be a tremendous fit. He had been teaching there for several years as well. So he knows the workings of the school, the students. I think they're going to be very happy because whenever he visits that campus, they are very pleased to see him as he comes back. So Mr. Sipolone is going to do a tremendous job, I feel. Along with that, we also interviewed for the assistant principalship, and we're pleased that Tanisha Sanchez-Irvan will be the new assistant principal. Tanisha is a product of our school system. She's a graduate of Shellman High School, very involved as a student there, went on to be one of our special education teachers, has grown up in the community, knows the community well, knows the students well, has been extremely effective special education teacher the last several years. She also has experience, administrative experience, in handling the high school portion of summer school as well. So I think the two of them are going to make a tremendous team at Raleigh Alternative School. So we look forward to very good things to come with Mr. Sipolone and Ms. Sanchez-Irvan there. The other highlight of this before, you know, if you have any questions, I know we have a lot of retirees that I'm sure, Ms. Daisart, you're going to recognize, but there's one under the resignation section who is a retired, returning to work, who has to be under the resignation, not the retiree, Ms. Elaine Starnes, who has been a teacher and a counselor with us for 55 years. And she is retiring this year, you know, at the end of this -- at the end of this school year. In fact, the 23rd, which has already passed. So she is a tremendous person. When I started at Shellman High School in 1971, she was already there as an English teacher, and then she moved to be a counselor and has been a counselor in many, many, many years. So she's going to be sadly missed, but knowing Elaine Starnes, she'll be there volunteering constantly. And I know, Ms. Daisart, you may want to comment on some of the other retirees before. We would say anything. Or if anyone else has questions about any of the information or positions on here, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Just dittoing Ms. Votchay's sentiments about Ms. Starnes. She has -- I'm sure many of y'all as well have known her also, but, you know, my girls were at Shellman High, graduated from there, and I've, you know, even before then, Ms. Starnes has always been the founder, you know, just a strong, dedicated person who, you could tell, just loved her students and made a difference in so many of their lives. And so we're going to miss her, Ms. Starnes, but congratulations. And, you know, we appreciate all that you've done for all of our students and throughout many years you've been in St. Peter Parish school system. And then also, under the retirements, Ms. Stanny Lee, I had the pleasure of working along with her when I was a teacher and she was still up in college. And she was a counselor at the YWC day camp on Community Street. And so we go way back. And I know she was just an -- she's an excellent teacher and a very sincere, dedicated person to students. And then Mr. George Felton, you know, he has many, many years with the St. Peter Parish school system too. And, you know, we appreciate all of his wonderful work in our system and with our students. And then Charlotte Petrie, again, she is a just dedicated employee, been with us many, many years, and just a wonderful individual. So we want to wish all of our retirees a happy retirement, but also say that we will miss you. But we do appreciate all of your many years of service. And then congratulations to Joe Sipolone and Tanisha Sanchez-Irvan on your appointments. We look forward to great things in your leadership. And we just want to let y'all know that we appreciate your hard work, too. And then under the support personnel, Levette Barbier, Joanna Valerie, and Ernest Door. We want to congratulate you for your retirement and thank you for many years of service. It's not going to be the same walking in the administrative building and not seeing Ernie at the front door. So we -- but we do appreciate all of those retirees and their many years of service. Okay. Anyone else?
And I'm just going to echo on the retirees, you know, for Ms. Daisart. Stanny Lee has been an institution at our elementary schools and most recently at Shellman Excellent teacher, teacher leader, mentor and coach to other teachers, tremendous job. George Felton, we're going to have to replace as our TV production teacher at Shellman High School, a very important position that we're going to have to fill in. George has done, you know, a credible job there as well. And Ms. Petrie, of course, at our elementary, excellent teacher. And like you said, our support personnel, you know, Levette Barbier, Joanna Valerie, and of course, Ernie, as you say, every morning with his hellos. It's going to be very, very different in our building with his retirement. So I'd like to echo your thoughts and congratulate them. And I know that, for the most part, I think Ernie's been back three or four times since he retired last week. So I expect to see him a lot.
Okay. Anyone else on personnel changes? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Next item, or the 2020-2021 personnel appointments.
And just for your -- this is information for our members. The next is what Paul Granberry likes to call the big list. It's up to this point, all of the employees who are currently working for our system and their worksite assignments. And that's just for informational purposes. Now, this could change tomorrow and the next day and the next day as we have more adjustments made or hire new people or people move from one position to another. But currently, as it stands, as of today, this is the employee list for our school system.
And a huge thanks goes out to Mr. Granberry and to Ms. Votchay and the administration for all these appointments, which was, again, a lengthy list. So we appreciate your diligence and hard work of filling those appointments. Next item is a motion to approve the 2020-21 Personnel Evaluation Plan.
Okay. Each year, we usually present to you an updated or revised copy of our Personnel Evaluation Plan. This year, we have undergone more revision to make sure that it is in compliance with the State School Personnel Evaluation Bulletin, which Bessie mandates each year. So in this document, you see the observations and evaluation criteria. You see some job descriptions, who reports to who, and what the evaluation tools look like. We have done this, you know, the committee has gotten together to make sure that this -- our plan is in compliance with the state plan. And the, you know, union leadership has seen this as well. We've sent this to Maggie Grisell, who, I guess you wouldn't mind my saying that she just had a baby, and she is a new mother to a beautiful baby girl. And while she was doing that, we sent her this to go over as well. So we want to know our teachers are diligently working, even through such personal times as giving birth. But anyway, this is then for we need a motion to approve this as our Personnel Evaluation Plan for the coming year.
Is there a motion on the floor at this time? There's a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. And congratulations, Maggie. Multitasking.
Mm-hmm.
Very happy for your new baby. Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is a motion to approve the request for permission to mail letters of assurance.
And what you see is just a little sample memo. We're bound, as you're by law, to notify any substitute or temporary personnel of our intent to reemploy them in the same capacity for the coming year. So this is just a letter of assurance to all substitutes that they are still within our substitute databank and will be called in the upcoming school year if they are needed.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is a motion to renew the agreement with the Port to provide audit services. Good evening, Mr. Fernandez.
All right. Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. We are requesting to renew our agreement with the Port, who is our independent auditor that does our annual audit. Current agreement with them is up for renewal. So we are requesting renewal for three years of the current agreement with an adjustment. Over the past six years, there has been an increase in the amount of work they have to do due to new gas fee pronouncements, which has greatly increased the amount of field work they have to do. So they are requesting a 15 percent increase in their fee, which would raise it from a total of $46,500 to $52,100 for the three-year period. And that includes the regular audit, the legislative auditors, additional agreed-upon procedures that we're required to do now, as well as some other actuarial work they do for us in conjunction with the audit. So we're requesting to renew for a three-year period at that rate. And they have also included an option to renew for an additional three one-year periods past that initial three-year term. So that's our request at this time.
Can you repeat the cost again, please?
The total cost for the three years would be an average of $51,200 per year, which is an increase of about 15 percent over the previous amount, which is a modest increase considering the additional work they've been doing for the last six years. They're kind of catching up. They have an increased their rate for the past three -- for the past six years. So it's a reasonable request, we view.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner?
So we have the three years at the $51,000?
Yes, sir.
And then the option would be at that same rate if we exercised it three years from now?
Well, actually, they're going to -- if we -- the option is to renew at a more modest increase, a 2% increase cost, like CPI increase, if we avail ourselves of that option.
Okay. All right.
Oh, wait. We could go into further negotiations at that time.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay. And your motion is to just go for the three years?
Yeah.
And then at the end of three years to negotiate?
And then we renegotiate another three-year option.
Okay. Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion or questions? Okay. There being none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a motion to approve the administration's request to renew flood insurance.
Okay. At the time of year, we have to renew our flood insurance on all our buildings. We have the premiums from the National Flood Insurance Program. The total to renew the insurance at the maximum limits on all our building will be $208,366. We have Mr. Timothy Clements from Clements Insurance, which is our agent of record here. You can answer any particular questions you have about the flood insurance program or the premiums, but we are recommending that we purchase the flood insurance at the stated premium.
Okay. Any discussion? Or is there a motion at this time? Mr. Egan?
One second.
Motion to renew the flood insurance? Ms. Lemoine? Seconded it? And just a quick question. Mr. Clements, this is the maximum we could carry on each building, correct?
Correct. That's the maximum that the NFIP allows, is $500,000 on the building and $500,000 on the content.
Okay. Thank you. Kind of at their mercy, unless we have the maximum. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. There's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Okay, there being none, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a motion to approve the administration's request to renew flood insurance.
Okay. As to Tommy, you, we have to renew our flood insurance on all our buildings. We have the premiums from the National Flood Insurance Program. The total to renew the insurance at the maximum limits on all our building will be $208,366. We have Mr. Timothy Clements from Clements Insurance, which is our agent of record here. You can answer any particular questions you have about the flood insurance program or the premiums, but we are recommending that we purchase the flood insurance at the stated premium.
Okay, any discussion? Or is there a motion at this time? Mr. Egan? Motion to renew the flood insurance? Ms. Lemoine seconds it. And just a quick question. Mr. Clements, this is the maximum we could carry on each building, correct?
Correct. That's the maximum that the NFIP allows. It's $500,000 on the building and $500,000 on the contents.
Okay. Thank you. Kind of at their mercy, unless we have the maximum. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Clements. Okay, next item is a motion to approve the results of the request for proposals for library books. Okay.
Doing them all this evening, most of them anyway. We put out an RFP for library books like we do on periodic cycle. We had six responses to the RFP. As Ms. Harleton and her team scored these, you can see the results in yellow. We have Falette and Macken scoring the same. So our recommendation is to approve both vendor vendors for the purchase of library books for the coming cycle.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. England.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Warner to approve the request for proposals for library books to the two lowest bidders. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item is a motion to approve the results of the request for proposals for ELA supplemental workbooks.
All right, we put out an RFP for supplemental workbooks. This is not our core curriculum area as, you know, as we've discussed in the past, in ELA, K-2 core curriculum is CKLA core knowledge, and we use the Wit and Wisdom series for third through fifth grade. But to supplement those basic texts, we usually buy some supplemental material for the students. So four companies sent in proposals. Ms. Harleton and her team sat and evaluated those four submissions and are recommending the Curriculum Associates, which is the common, ready Common Core supplemental textbooks, supplemental workbooks that go along with the series that we have. So that's at a cost of $31,590.04.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Is there a motion on the floor at this time?
I'll make a motion that we approve it, the request for proposals for ELA supplemental workbooks.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. White, seconded by Ms. Essevedo. Any discussion? You have something to say, Ms. Fernandez? Okay, there being none, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay, next item is a motion to approve the results of the bid for large cafeteria equipment.
Okay. In your packets, you have bid tabulation for large cafeteria equipment. This is a bid that we do to cover expected purchases next year of cafeteria equipment to replace old cafeteria equipment. The only thing is I want to bring to your attention, there was one vendor, there were four vendors that submitted bids. One vendor had to be disqualified because their bid did not contain all the documentation that we require in our bid specifications. But in the other cases, we are requiring, we are recommending the low responsive bidder on every item.
Just a clarification, Mr. Fernandez, this is just as we see fit to have or have to replace anything, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion on the floor at this time? Most of them, Mr. England? Is there a second? Ms. Lemoine seconds the motion. Any further discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Motion to approve the results of the bid for Official Journal is the next item.
Okay, every year, we require, the board is required to appoint an Official Journal for publishing board minutes and other information the board needs to publicize. Our recommendation is that we appoint, accept the bid from the St. Bernard Voice, which, keeping the same pricing that they previously have given us in the past. So St. Bernard Voice is our recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. There's a motion by Mr. Campbell. Is there a second? By Ms. Jackson?
I have a question.
Mr. Warner?
Did anybody else offer a bid?
We didn't receive any other bids, but there are very specific requirements in the law. And I think the St. Bernard Voice basically is the only one in the parish that meets those requirements at this time. So.
So no other bids?
So nobody else. If they had bid, we probably wouldn't be able to accept it because it wouldn't have met the law's requirements. But you're right, there were no other bids.
Thank you.
Mr. Fernandez, you said the amount is the same as last year?
Same rate as last year, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's, that's held pretty steady?
Yes, ma'am. I think for the last several years, they haven't increased their rate.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, there is a motion on the floor and a second. Any other questions or discussion? There being none, signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is approve the results of the bid for vehicle painting and repair.
Okay, this is an annual bid that we do to select a firm to do minor body repairs and painting on our school buses. And we had two bidders. And we are recommending Friddella's College Center, I believe, which had the low bid on these items.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to do a Friddella's.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second on the floor? Ms. White? Seconds the motion. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a motion to approve the results of the bid for gas, diesel, and other fluids.
Okay, this again is an annual bid for gasoline, transmission fluid, oil, other things that we purchased to service our buses. And we're recommending the low bidder on each item. Now, there were two bidders.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
I'll make a motion.
The lowest bid in each category. The motion by Ms. Jackson, is there a second? Okay. Ms. Essevedo seconds the motion. Any discussion? There being none, everyone signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now the next motion is to approve the revisions to the 2019-2020 General Fund and Special Revenue Funds budgets. Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, ma'am. Every year, we do a year-end revision of our budget to bring it more in line with our year-ending expectations of revenues and expenses. And as was presented here, there's not too many changes that we've made. I just want to highlight a few things that we've done. One of the things we've done is we've reduced sales tax collection estimates for the last three months of the year, which we haven't received yet, by about 20% because of the uncertainty surrounding the COVID virus and potential decreases that people are expecting in those revenues. So out of an abundance of caution, we reduced it by 20%. We moved, there's one change between the budget that was sent to you earlier and this one, and it's not, it's not a significant change and it doesn't affect the bottom line. We received notification this past week from the state that LA4 funds, which are the preschool funds we receive from the state, are funded by two sources. One is state funding, and the other was federal funding through TANF funds, Temporary Assistance to Needy Families. Well, this past week, we notified that the funds that previously we were told were TANF funds have been reallocate, had been redesignated as state funds due to the way they're reimbursing it. So now they'll be considered state funds. So we took those funds out of the special revenue funds and moved them into the general fund. It's a direct offset revenues and expenditures, so it doesn't change the bottom line that I said. It just takes it out of the special revenue funds column that you saw and moves it into the general fund and increases the revenues and the expenditures by equivalent amount. The MFP is our final actual figure of MFP after the mid-year adjustments that they do for increases and decreases in student enrollment. We've adjusted all the salaries and benefits to our actual year-end salaries and benefits. And what we did also is we reduced some of our estimates of electricity and gas. Since our schools have been closed for the last couple of months, we anticipated less usage of electricity and gas, as well as gasoline for our school buses and repairs. So we reduce it, reduce those amounts a bit. In your packets, you'll see there are five exhibits. The first one is a summary, which shows a summary of the revenues, expenditures, other sources, and uses of funds, and our projected ending balance. Number two is a line-for-line detail of the revenues and the changes between the last adopted budget and the current one. Exhibit three is the same thing for expenditures in the general fund. Exhibit four is a revision to the lunch budget. And the lunch budget revision includes the revenues and costs related to the emergency food service that we've been doing for the last couple of months for the community. And the fifth is the special revenue funds budget, our final allocations on each of those special revenue, major special revenue funds. So if you have any answer, any questions you might have.
Okay, are there any questions at this time or comments? Ms. Jackson?
So while there's been a decrease in projected revenue, but there's also been a decrease in projected expenses, so we're still on good footing by the future.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
It's kind of evening out.
Yeah, we're expecting it in time, yes.
I have a question.
Mr. Warner?
So you, you lowered the sales tax by $700,000?
Yes.
And that's just out of an abundance of caution?
Right. We will, we will know, we will know in the next couple of weeks how April sales taxes came out.
And we can adjust it back.
We expected a decrease for March, but March ended up being even, no real decrease. But we're waiting to see April, May, June, which we don't see till two months after the fact.
Right.
So we'll get the April figures in the next couple of weeks, and we'll see where it's going. We are hoping, you know, we are confident that it's not going to be a substantial decrease because people will shop and doing things.
Right, right.
But, you know, we'll know that in the next couple of weeks.
And it's also sales and use taxes. So a lot of the major businesses here, if there was a decrease in activity on the riverfront here, those sales and use taxes are going to show a decline as well. So it's not just the retail outlets we're looking at.
Right. And I did see you made your adjustments on electricity and gas.
Yes.
But water, when?
That was, we had to increase estimates a little bit on that due to the actual usage of water. So we kind of underestimated a little in the last budget. So.
Washing our hands a lot.
Yeah.
And I did notice the increase too on the lunch fund. And I saw the figure, that's what it was from, providing the food to the community.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget and the revisions to the budget. And y'all can have different, y'all can continue the discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner. There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. England. Any further discussion or questions on the general fund and special revenue fund? Just to say that we did hold a public hearing in the beginning of the meeting.
Well, actually, the public hearing is for the next item, which is next year's budget.
Oh, for the, for the special revenue, excuse me, yes.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the revision to the 1920s issue. Now we got to look at next year.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next is the motion to approve the 2021 General Fund and Special Revenue Funds budgets.
Okay, also in your packets, you have the projected 2021 budget. The same applies to 2021 that I discussed earlier with regard to the LA4 monies. This is going to be different than the one you received earlier because we did shift those funds from special revenue fund into the general fund. So there's going to be an increase in revenues and expenditures from what you've seen before, and you won't see the LA4 in the special revenue fund exhibit. Things I'd like to highlight in this, in terms of revenues, I carried full, I estimated a reduction for the first four months of the year in sales taxes, just again out of an abundance of caution. So we did a 24, 20% decrease in the first four months of 2021. Interest revenue you'll see has decreased because interest rates have been going down over the past year. So we will be earning less interest in the future unless something happens, but we reduced that amount. MFP, we are estimating at the current level. As Ms. Votche said before, the MFP goes to the legislature and they either adopt it or they don't. And if they don't, it reverts back to the current year's MFP. So again, we've used the current year's MFP as our estimate and not the estimate they did for next year, which is a little bit higher than this year. So out of an abundance of caution, we are using the current estimate for the MFP. Salaries and benefits reflect expected staffing levels for next year. The administration has done their staffing for the schools for next year, and we incorporated that into our new budget. And it also includes the benefits. We built in a, an anticipated 3% mid-year increase in insurance premiums because that's what's been happening in the last few years. So we built in to expect a mid-year increase of approximately 3% in premiums. And it also reflects the decrease in the retirement rates for teachers' retirement and school employees, which was referenced in the memo that you received. That went down a little bit, which saved us a little money on that. And we also went back up with electricity and gas estimates because we're anticipating that school will open in the fall, in the new year. And if anything changes with, in terms of the sales tax estimates and that, we'll make adjustments in the next budget revision, which will take place in the fall. But in your packet as well, there are the same exhibits. The only additional exhibit you have that you didn't have in the revised budget is number four, which is proposed employee benefits, which is something we do with the original budget, which shows last year's budget compared to the new budget in terms of benefits, which shows increases and decreases. So you'll see that there's a net increase of $221,000. Some have gone down. Retirement has gone down slightly because of the decrease in the retirement rate. But then that's offset in some places by increases in salaries from step increases our employees will receive. There's also an increase in insurance from the expected increase we mentioned before. But it also has the proposed lunch budget, where we're going back to our original, our normal operations, which will go down because we don't have the emergency feeding anymore in the new year, and the special revenue funds budgets, which are the allocations that we've been comprised of so far for next year, 2021, in those different funds.
And I'd like to add to some of this, just in a general maybe overview of the situation because we're looking at a lot of the detail in different accounts. And everybody's saying, well, what's going to happen? You're hearing businesses laying off people. You're talking about other governmental bodies with potential layoffs or dire situations. The first comment is we've maintained, we've been very fiscally responsible over. The first comment is we've maintained, we've been very fiscally responsible over, I think forever, it seems like, through many, many dark times and periods. We've always kept our finger on what happens if we hit another spot that's going to be a problem. So if you notice our fund balance, we have a healthy fund balance. We have it even higher than what is recommended to keep your bond ratings and such up. So that's where we begin. When you're looking at sources of revenue for our school system, there are three major sources of revenue. When you look at our revenue picture, the three biggest items you see is a state-funded MFP, which you're looking at in this document, over $44 million that we get from the state in minimum foundation program funds. Then you look at our sales taxes, which we're projecting maybe at 14 and a half, 15 million, somewhere in that line. And you see the ad valorem taxes, and you see them broken out according to different sources, what they actually fund. So that's our three major sources. Now, how is that going to be affected? You know, are we going to experience any difficulties from the revenue side? The MFP, we were hoping, if you remember, before this pandemic started, we were hoping to see an increase. Well, what the legislature does is they will fund an increase if the BESI board sends one over to the legislature and they approve it, then you get the increase. If they don't approve what the BESI board sends over, they have to revert back to the prior year. They can't come up, the legislature can't come up with their own formula. So they can't, I don't want to use the word mess around, is that in a bad way, but they cannot adjust that formula that had been adopted in the prior year. So what you see Mr. Fernandez has done in this MFP is to say, well, we're going to think we can get about the same because we don't, the legislature's not going to adopt a higher budget. What their, our higher allocation, what they're trying to do right now, and they're grappling at the state level, how are they going to survive in the situation they're setting? Now, the only danger that could be a possibility with the MFP is that if the state is so strapped for funds, if they're not going to use, say, the COVID money that's coming down from the government to plug some of the holes in the state budget, or if they grant, I don't know, if they reduce so many taxes, if they reduce their revenues to where they can't meet expenditures, if they do some kind of across-the-board cut, then the MFP is subject to that. And I think they can go up to 3% on and across the board of this, and that's a significant amount on our, say, $44, $45 million. So the only risk that we run with that major source is if the state does an across-the-board cut in all funding to balance the state budget. So they're grappling right now with how much money are they going to take in and then what programs are they going to fund? So if they don't take in the revenues that to fund all of the current expenditures, that's the only way this could be in jeopardy in any way. All right, then we go to the sales and use taxes, and we talked about that a little bit. We're not quite sure how St. Bernard Parish, our sales taxes are going to be affected in this coming year. So what David has done was take a conservative approach in looking at some reductions so that we're not going to hopefully be hit with anything even more so than that that we haven't planned for. And if it comes in higher, then we can restore some of these expenditures that we may have reduced in the interim. So that is a wait and see because we don't know what the sales and use tax is going to look like exactly. Then we come to the ad valorem. This is a reassessment year also. Normally, as we all know, usually in May, we come up and adopt our millages for the coming year. But every four years on a reassessment year, it usually gets kicked to June because they're still in the process of reassessing all the property in the parish. Well, we just got a notification that because of all of the impediments, we're not going to get those numbers till mid-July. So in mid-July, we'll see what the properties have been reassessed at, and then we'll have to make some determinations on what millage we're going to assess. You know, if it's got to roll back, roll forward, you know, all those kinds of things that we look at every four years. But the key is what are these properties going to come in on with the assessments? Is big business in some way because of this pandemic and the oil war in the world, are any of those assets going to be devalued a little bit? So we won't know what is going to occur with the ad valorem tax base until mid-July. So we're looking at, in this budget, staying stable for ad valorem taxes, decreasing our sales taxes a little bit, staying stable with the MFP, which we're hoping that because that's the largest amount. We're hoping that the legislature comes through and does not reduce revenues so much that they can't meet these obligations. So with that in mind, we think we've put forth a very conservative picture. Now, we go over to the expenditure side, and we have made a very, we're budgeted, you know, Mr. Fernandez has budgeted very closely with that. We're in really, we're in good shape because if you look at our fund balance, we may dip into it a little bit, but we've planned for these types of things to happen, and we won't know the whole picture until it unfolds as the months go by. But what I want to say, and what I think this board wants to say to all of our employees and all of our people out there, we are very confident, we have no intention of reducing salaries, laying off staff, you know, people's jobs are secure, we intend to provide the best educational services for our students. We don't know exactly how, what that's going to look like this fall with the guidelines that we have to work under. We don't know if it's going to be a blended structure. We are planning for every contingency right now. We don't know if we're looking at kids coming to a brick-and-mortar building every day, all day next year. We don't know if it's going to look like a blended situation where might be for older kids every other day, or we may have to shut down for a couple of weeks depending upon what the, this virus does within the community. But we have plans of how we're going to address each of those different scenarios. We're doing that right now. But as far as people with job security, we're fine. And we have plans and monies that we're going to utilize in these situations. So I think we want to put everyone's fears to rest because I've been hearing that, how, you know, what are we going to do in the school system, how are we going to be affected? But when you look at our three major sources of revenue and what our plans are with them in this budget, I think you can see that we're in pretty good shape. And that the plans that we've made and the plans, I think that are the actions that y'all have taken over the past many years has put us in a position that we're going to be able to weather this storm from a financial perspective. Okay?
So anybody else has any questions, you'll be happy to answer those. Thank you, Ms. Vocher. Very good reassurance to the community and to all our employees. Okay. We need a motion on this. Okay, there's a motion by Mr. England. Second by Ms. Lamoy. Are there any other questions at this time or comments? Okay, there being none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next item is a motion to approve the administration's request to bid for Trist gym roof replacement.
Okay. What you see is an advertisement. We are 15 years post Katrina. If you remember, Trist was not a replacement school, it was a repair. So when we renovated Trist initially, 15 years ago, we repaired that roof. We did not replace that roof. That was the FEMA assessment on it, that's what we did. At this point, there is a need to replace that roof on the Trist gym. Now, the subsurface is fine, so it's not going to be one of these where you have to not only replace the top layer or the top membrane, I mean, that's all we're going to have to replace. We're not going to have to go to the subsurface there. The bids will be, you know, if you approve this, it'll be advertised in Friday's voice will start there. We will advertise for that three-week period, accept the bids, and come back at the June meeting. And the work, according to our roof consultant, which helped design this and put it out, can be done easily in July. Now, we're not talking a major whole replacement, like I said, with all the subsurface stuff. We're talking about the membrane replacement. So we feel, you know, confident that can be done. Now, I do want to say, when you look at this budget and you look at the ad valorem maintenance fund as one of the special revenue projects, these are the monies that are going to be used for this particular endeavor. Now, this is only going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars or so. This is not like a million-dollar project or anything like that, a couple hundred thousand. But what the citizens of this community did and what the board planned in this whole operation, remember, we took that five and a half mills that had been dedicated to debt service and asked the people, could we take that and shift it to that permanent maintenance fund because that was our plan, without increasing any taxes, to provide a fund to do the maintenance on the buildings as these things would be coming up? So what you're going to see is one of the first times we're going to access those funds for a somewhat major replacement. And we've got them here. It won't cut into any of the general fund. If you can see, we've got about, I think it was $3 million something. If you look at our revised budget under that ad valorem maintenance fund, that's where the money will be coming from for this particular roof replacement. Now, another project that we have scheduled, but it doesn't fall under the bid laws, is that we also this summer are going to be doing at the Sherman High School ninth-grade academy, you know, how that campus is growing with kids. And the assistant principal over there, Ms. Boakel, has been asking us for quite a long period of time, along with Mr. Warner, that right outside of the ninth-grade academy into the courtyard area, you know, we have that big, open, grassy area, but with the ninth graders at lunchtime and at other times, to spill out into that area for eating their lunch or socializing or whatever, there's no covered area there. And if it rains and it gets muddy and messy, so we're going to be coming out with a concrete slab right off of the area, right outside of the cafeteria, the hallway into that courtyard, coming out with an overhang with those translucent panels, you know, that are on the main side courtyard at the Sherman High School outside the main cafeteria, that will match the structure, the look of that structure. So to bring that over to the ninth-grade academy side, that will hold many of those ninth graders if they're going to sit outside and eat lunch and socialize and have a place that is covered and protected from the weather. And that's going to be another project that will be done in this June-July period of time before the new year starts. It wasn't a biddable item to bring to y'all, but I just wanted to inform everybody, that's going to be done as well. Those are the two major projects. We've also done a couple of boiler replacements over the past at Sherman Elementary School and on the roof of the ninth-grade academy too. So we've been utilizing those smaller projects, utilizing these funds for those repairs and replacements and buildings so it doesn't affect the general fund. Yes, ma'am?
Just wanted to ask, I know with everything going on, the status of the project at La Caste, is that still on track for being?
It's still on track. It kind of, we took a step back from it, but I will, you know, going to get back to that one. I don't have an update tonight, Ms. Jackson, but I'll make sure that we have one for you. Let me make a note of that to make sure I do that.
I haven't said anything about it because I know that there's many, many other things going on.
Why don't you tell the people, tell us a little bit about it? You said green space that the parish owned right next adjacent to the gym and parking lot at La Caste, and we're taking over, they've donated that green space to us, and we're going to be doing something because we know the La Caste property, the playground area is probably one of our smallest areas.
La Caste is one of the only schools that doesn't have any grass area.
Yeah, that's true.
But there's green space for the students to use. So what?
Mike? So we thought it would be nice, we're going to take and fence in, it's the community garden that's directly behind La Caste, fence it in, and we met with Jason Dewey and the administration at La Caste to discuss plans. I think they're going to take a small section of the parking lot now and make that into a basketball court, and then talked about, you know, adding some picnic tables so that the teachers are able to also utilize that as some like outdoor instructional space too, that the teachers would be able to rotate days and times to be able to take the kids outside and maybe have class outside occasionally, and then to give them some more space during lunch because right now, logistically, that's been difficult because of the limited amount of space. So they were hoping to have it done by the time school started in August, but obviously we've had a lot of other things going on.
But we will, we're going to be looking at that intensely. It's a good project for the kids at La Caste really because we don't have a whole lot of outside and especially, like you're saying, space, green space with real grass. So we are working on that one too. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that with this Trist roof replacement, we know that the funding source is that ad valorem millage that we put aside specifically for these types of projects as they come up. Okay?
I'll make a motion that we approve the administration's request to bid for Trist gym roof replacement.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Warner to replace the Trist gym roof. Is there a second? Ms. White? Sorry, Mr. Kim. Okay, any discussion? Okay, I just have a real quick question, Ms. Vocher, about how much the addition at Sherman High School ninth-grade academy really sounds wonderful for the kids and then La Caste too, of course, we know that's very needed. About how much are we talking about?
The one end, Sherman High, will be under the $150,000 threshold. So that did not rise the level of a biddable item for public works. So we're able to get internal quotes, and it's looking at, it's under $150,000.
Okay.
So it'll be just laying the concrete, putting the footing, well, first, you know, like going to the soil, grading the area, laying the concrete, doing the tie-ins for the overhang and tying into the subsurface drainage, and then laying those translucent panels on those footings that go up.
That'll be a great addition.
And then we'll put some, you know, little benches or whatever it is that they would like in that area.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next item, items to be placed on the agenda of the next committee meeting. And you always have before the next committee meeting to add any items to the agenda. Next item, superintendent's recommendations, Ms. Vocher.
Okay, we've been getting questions about pre-K registration and such, and we put out on our social media platforms and put out the information that we're beginning next week in June to take applications or registration for pre-K for next year, but it will be by appointment. So as people are asked to call the number of the preschool, I'll say it over the air, it's 504-267-3310. Again, 267-3310, which is at Davies Preschool, that's where their office is, and you'll be scheduled for an appointment to come and complete registration for preschool. So, there's not gonna be lines to stand in, there won't be a mass call to say, come at a certain day. We're gonna be doing it with individualized appointments and maintain all of the guidelines that we're under for safety issues and that. Our summer skills program this summer for all the students who were struggling on the year and need some form of summer skills from an academic perspective, that is, will be beginning later this week. Ms. Lumetta was with the teachers, I think today, training them and making sure that they were all comfortable with our remote platforms, again, because it's gonna all be done remotely. And any student who is recommended for that summer skills program, we have the devices now, if they do not have a device, they will be loaned one for the summer, and if they do not have connectivity, internet access, we will be checking out a hotspot to them for it. That hotspot will be, we will have the safeguards on it so that it can only access the educational sites and materials that we are asking the students to go to. So, it will not be one that will open up completely to any site on the internet. So, if they do not have personal devices or internet accessibility for this summer program, we are providing it so that we won't have any, you know, students will not have any impediments to completing their summer skills program in the month of June. And as we talked a little bit about this coming year, we are planning for any, for all the different possibilities, and people are saying, well, when are you gonna open school? Are you gonna open school? Are we coming back? Right now, we're looking at the approved calendar that the board passed earlier this school year in December, when we passed, we approved the calendar for this coming year. That's still in effect. We will not know until later this summer the conditions under which we will be operating in early August. As that becomes clearer, we'll give more information out about the beginning of the year. We are using the CARES Act money, which has been, which will be distributed nationwide, of which we will get a part of. Major emphasis will be on technological devices and connectivity. So, if we do hit a situation where we have to do the remote learning at home, that we will have one-to-one on those devices and internet access. It'll be a challenge to make sure those are distributed properly, monitored, maintained, replaced, but we have that commitment to move forward using those federal funds. That will be the major focus of that federal funding that we receive. We don't know if we, in order to provide services to students next year, I don't know if class sizes are going to be limited within TAC groups. We don't know any of that yet. So, I think all of our experiences in Katrina and all of the other challenges that we've been through have prepared this school district and this community, I think, to roll with and be able to adapt to whatever changes are necessary, you know, that have to be done. So, there'll be more information coming as the situation hopefully becomes a little clearer as the next couple of months unfold. As far as our summer feeding program, beginning next week, we have, we have to go back to the other part of the quote "summer feeding program" and what we're gonna be doing this summer at two sites, which will be at Smith Elementary and at Shawman Elementary. On Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we will be cooking a hot meal on a take-out basis, and the child must be present to receive the meal. So, parents can drive to the school. We have it set up right by the cafeteria. If they have three children, the three children must be with them, and they'll receive between 11 and 1 on those designated Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, the lunch and the breakfast together, shelf-stable breakfast with a prepared, freshly-prepared lunch. And that will continue through the month of June. Now, there is another program that the federal government has come up with, and we have passed out the one? Yeah, we have passed out that information to as many of our parents as we could because we just got that on May 18th, which was this past Monday, the last week of school. The federal government did a COVID extended benefit program, and what they did was any child who was eligible nationwide for free or reduced lunch would receive a one-time benefit. And what they did was to take the number of days schools were closed, and I'm just gonna make this number up, say they were closed 50 school days, say we were closed 50 days, make the math easier. And you take what the meal reimbursement rate would have been for those per day, say it was $5. So, they would say, okay, you missed 50 days of meals that you were eligible for. You do the 50 times the 5, you come up with $250. Well, with all the pennies and the number of days and the meal reimbursement, what that amounted to here was $285. So, any child who was eligible for free or reduced lunch can go on the website, and we've got it posted on our website, the link, but we have nothing to do with dispensing those funds. It's not coming from the school system. It's coming from the federal government. We're just publicizing the link to go to. The parent goes to that link, puts in the information on their child, which will require your child's social security number, what school they go to and such. They check it against the database that they have up on our student information system. And if they say, yes, he qualifies, then you get $285 for that child in food stamp, the equivalent of SNAP benefits. So, you get a card that when you go to the grocery, you have $285 per child in groceries in a one-time thing that you can buy, and the card will be good for a year to spend that money. Now, because we, in our school system, have, had worked out another grant in coupling a lot of our schools together to participate in what we call the CEP program. It's a community eligible lunch program that we applied for a few years ago, a couple of years ago, where we were able to qualify as a community, all of our elementary schools, our three middle schools in Raleigh, as CEP schools. That means every child who attends that school is eligible for this benefit, regardless of the parent's socioeconomic background. Whether they would qualify independently or not is irrelevant. By virtue of the fact that they have attended our elementary schools, our middle schools, or Raleigh, every child who attended any of our schools this year is eligible for this $285 benefit. The high school, which was not under this program, if the child himself or herself was eligible for free or reduced lunch, that high school child is eligible, but not every child in our high school. Okay, that makes sense? So, every parent who is listening, you have until June 8th to apply for this benefit. So, you can go on our website, and we can send you to the link, I mean, it'll be there that you can go to and put in your child's information. I know many people who have already done it. They say it's fairly easy to do, it worked well. You just plug in the information, they check that your child went to our school, and that school has the benefit, and then you will receive that card with the $285 for groceries and such to be spent in any way, you know, you choose under that program. So, any questions or any concerns, I'll be happy to answer.
Are there any questions at this time? Mr. Englund?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Nysol. All those meals that we gave during the summertime to all the citizens of St. Benno Parish, are being reimbursed by FEMA with that?
Well, that's a tricky situation. Okay, first of all, if it was a reimbursable meal, which Ms. Bloom, Toni Bloom, who does a fantastic job in our food service program, made sure that every meal that we distributed under the federal guidelines was what was considered a reimbursable meal. So, we get a reimbursement from the federal government for a certain amount of money to produce that. Now, the meals that we produced, it cost us, just like in our regular food lunch program, it costs us more to produce it than we get reimbursed. All right, so, the first step is, under the food service program, naturally, we apply for the reimbursement for the meal up to the reimbursable level that USDA, Department of Agriculture, gives us for each one of them normally. The excess money, we can apply under the category B, emergency funds, FEMA, to see if we can get reimbursed for a portion of those funds. Right now, if it is an eligible cost, meaning if we are paying people overtime to do it, if we have those additional emergency costs above what we've been reimbursed for, then they're currently at a 75% reimbursement level. Now, if the state, I mean, this is funny, if, I guess if FEMA still works the way they've worked. If you reach a certain level at the state that you're spending out so many millions of dollars on an emergency basis for the recovery, that reimbursement level could technically rise from 75% to 90%. Right now, we're still at the 75% mark. So, we have already filed the basic application for this disaster or this pandemic through FEMA. We are putting together all of our expenditures that we think might be eligible for FEMA reimbursement. We are, we will be submitting them, and then it'll be another round of FEMA negotiations as we go and see what we will get reimbursed for. So, to answer your question, we'll get, on those meals, some natural reimbursement through USDA. The excess costs, we're going to try to see if we can get some FEMA reimbursement, but possibly at 75% of the excess cost. So, yes, we will get some reimbursement, exactly what we're still in the process of looking, but you can rest assured that we are on top of the regulations, what we have to do, and we're proceeding to make sure that we maximize whatever reimbursement dollars that we are entitled to for the services that we have provided to the community and to the children.
Thank you, Ms. Votch, because I know all the people of the parish really appreciate that this has been done by the school system.
They've done, like I said, they've done, you know, and people look at it and think, oh, it's the easiest thing in the world to do.
No, it's not.
But the, it is so labor-intensive when you look at, even when we ran those long lunch lines, you had all of our cafeteria staff, Toni Bloom and her crew, you had our custodial staff, Jason Dewey and his crew, you had the school administrators, and what turned, a two-hour giveaway that day is actually a six-hour production for the staff in all of the preparation and the cleanup, as well as the standing out in the heat and loading cars with all of that, all of the stuff that's been prepared.
And me personally, as for, for the board, I think we appreciate all the efforts, you know, from all the people who put their efforts into this, to give this benefit to the public of St. Benno Parish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englund, absolutely. And, Ms. Votch, all of our sincerest thanks to you, the administration, and the teachers, you know, for all the additional work and trying to stay on top of this learning curve that we've all been through. We, I think we all appreciate it, and I know the parents and the students do, too. So, we thank you very much. And every day's a new day, I know, and new scenarios.
And I wanna say this, and I don't get to say it often enough to all of our employees as a whole. We have an incredible group of people within this school system and within this community. To run an operation this large, and from one day, you're in school with 7,800, 7,900 kids, 500 some odd teachers, 400 some odd support staff, you've got all of these people, and then boom, we're closing today at 3:00. Get your stuff, and everybody goes home. And it's like, okay, now we have to switch gears, and how do we go into a distance or a remote learning model when, if you're in any business, when you're talking about training all of your staff for any change in operation, that is a lengthy process with the planning that takes place, the training that takes place, the working through everybody's individual fears of, well, how do, how do I do that? Some people adapt much more quickly, others don't. Those processes take a long time to accomplish that training and that change, and we had to go from one day you do this to the next day we're doing this. Mary Lumetta, I cannot say enough about someone who spearheaded this entire operation from the technology point of view. How do we get that access for everyone? How do we train people? How do we make that work? You should have seen her in operation in terms of the energy and the mental acuity that it took to put this in operation and make it happen. They're training teachers at 10:00 at night, and then we've got teachers that are actually participating in that training at 10:00 at night and on Saturdays and on Sundays. So, in two weeks, in training an entire staff, and you're doing it at different levels. You've got some people that take to it like this, especially the younger ones. Then you got the old hands like me and the veterans that, oh, wait a minute, let's take a look at, taking a little bit more training to get you into that kind of a, you know, that kind of a situation. So, the massive change, and our students, you know, the kids and the parents, you know, what does that take to try to help implement that at home when you're worried about your work situation as a parent, the kids, you know, some of them respond better, maybe, some of them, getting their attention in a classroom is one thing, it's kinda tough to hold their attention when they're sitting at home and running around the room, too, you know? We even had one parent say, well, gee, that teacher isn't really controlling those first graders the way she should be, and I'm thinking, okay, they're all, they're all at home. So, one parent is commenting on the actions of the other child in that same Zoom lesson. Just the funny little things that happen along the way. But what it takes to completely shift from one mode of transferring or teaching and learning to a completely different one overnight is not an easy thing to do. And the materials that you have and the way we implement lends itself to a face-to-face situation. Now, what we're doing now, we have a learning management system, we are retraining everyone in, as we speak, in a better delivery model if we have to do this come fall, because we know that this may be a part, just a regular part of what the future is going to look like, and we're making those adjustments now. So, I guess it's a long, roundabout way of saying, I'm just so proud of our people, our staff, the energy, the enthusiasm that they've taken to make sure that teaching and learning is continuing, the work that they've put in, and their attitudes, you know, that they continue to have, to try to help us get better at they continue to have to try to help us get better at what we do. And our kids and our parents, for the, you know, most part, the community and the parents have been extremely supportive and they're, and understanding that it's not perfect, it's definitely not perfect, but we're going to, we're getting better at it.
I would just like to add to that, as someone who has been on the other side of having to teach the kids at home, it's been very overwhelming to see the amount of support not only our community has given, our educators during this time, but just to see how much they're willing, our educators are willing to give, go the extra mile to make sure, from the drive-through graduations to, you know, teachers writing letters to the students and, you know, coming by and dropping off treats on the porch, and just to make sure that everybody has still stayed so connected through all of this has been quite amazing to see. It definitely speaks to the level of community that we have here, so.
And you know, it's, it's really, and I probably am going to get in trouble for saying this, but everyone around the country seems to be so concerned with what the kids have missed in the learning process the last few weeks, and are they ever going to catch up? Are we ever going to close the gap? How do you compensate for eight weeks of no face-to-face instruction and that gloom and doom? And I say to them, we've been through this. During Katrina, we dealt with situations, we were out of school 11 weeks at the beginning of the year. It took us 11 weeks to get those trailers up and running. And then we had kids, as they came back every day, who had been to three, four, five different schools by the time they came back to us, or had been to no school at all. So we had kids that had missed school for two, three, four months before they came back. And what we had to do was look at an individual learning plan for each student as they came back. And eventually.
They cut.
Those gaps were made up, those gaps in learning. But what we felt, what was the most difficult thing to do, that I realized, and I think that we all realized in the beginning, didn't realize it when it first happened at Katrina, but realized that as we were getting people back, was the emotional damage that had been done to children and to families and the community, that the mental health and social supports that we needed to provide were more important than the actual learning that was taking place, because those barriers to learning had to be addressed before we could get back to what was really important from an educational point of view. And this is much more subtle, because you don't have the physical destruction, but you've got the isolation of people, you've got the emotional upheaval within families, you may have employment situations, that stresses that families are dealing with in terms of health, in terms of the economy and their earning power, and all that translates to kids, because they feel that. So what we're going to be facing, to me, what's most important, is taking a look at every child as an individual. Yes, we're looking at the gaps in their learning, but what we have to be very conscious of is how they're reacting as they come back to us. Are we seeing any signs of real distress in children that we need to address so that they can learn better? And that's one thing that I took away from Katrina, that I didn't even have a clue before Hurricane Katrina. It wasn't on my radar the first day we came back, but it quickly became a big part of what we had to do during that period of time. And I think to a lesser extent, or to somewhat of a little bit different extent, we're going to be, we're going to have to face those similar situations, again, maybe a little more subtle, but they're going to be there. And we have to be able to address those as well. And not only in the kids, but in our staff and families, you know, so.
Anyone else? Again, Ms. Votchay, Ms. Lometta, all of our administrators and teachers, parents and students, we thank you for learning, being on top of the learning curve, and we look forward to continued excellence in education, no matter what way we have to deliver it. So we thank you again, and for all the extra efforts of everyone involved, we appreciate it. Okay, so everyone, please stay safe, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
We're adjourned.
There's most of Mr. Campbell, second of Ms. Assavete. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Meeting's now adjourned, thank you, and good night.